I know they said that. They need to...
Ah, he's a little smaller.
Now calling, seven o'clock, County Commissar meeting to order. Call Mr. Johnson for the invocation.
Let's pray, please. Heaven and Father, we again come to your presence, and we come this time in the season of Thanksgiving. Father, we realize that should be our attitude all the time, but so many times it's not. And for those times, we ask for forgiveness. But on this occasion, we offer you the many thanks that are ours. We thank you for the joy of our salvation. We thank you that we live in the land of plenty. We thank you, Father, for our institutions that have served us so well, and we ask for forgiveness when we fail them. We ask for wisdom tonight, Father. We may go about the people's business, that we may deal in an honest and forthright manner. We'd set aside any presuppositions we have, any pride. We'll make the right decisions. It'll be for the good of this county and for the glory of your son, the Lord Jesus, for it's in his name we ask it. Amen.
Amen. Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in just as it is. Call on Mr. Mashman for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, the only two adjustments that I know of. We do have a closed session, which will be for property acquisition, and that will be 143-318.11A5. And we also have, under unfinished business, the recommendation to award a contract on the road leading to the Pratt property in the West Farm Industrial Park. And Mr. Lynn Neblock will be making that presentation under unfinished business. Mr. Chair, those are the adjustments that I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mashman. Do we have any additions to the justice to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I say move.
Okay, the move. Do we approve the agenda? Are there any questions regarding the agenda? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Our next medal will be item number one. We do have a financial audit from Mrs. Favi, if she's in the audience, please. Thank you.
I have to say, it's good to be back. Let me know, can you hear me now that I've adjusted a little bit? We're okay?
Yes.
I always like to start by thanking you again for allowing us to continue to be your auditors. We really enjoy working with Susan and the finance office staff. They've really, really been helpful, and they're always well-prepared. We really appreciate that as auditors. We come in and they're ready to go. Our audit conclusion in the current year was an unqualified opinion, which means basically that we found no material misstatements that would cause the financial statements to be misleading to the studied reader. The financial statements, I cannot say are written for the average person to just flip open and try and comprehend everything that's going on, but most readers would be able to follow along with them. We have certain LGC things that we have to follow that sometimes seem a little confusing, but they're there. If you will look at the slides that we gave out, they basically are going to run from top to bottom, and then it starts off in the next column. So if you're trying to follow along, it'll kind of run like a newspaper article. The audit highlights numbers basically come from exhibit C and D of the actual financial statements that you have. We always start by talking about the general fund first. The general fund's cash at June 30, 2007, was $37.9 million. The general fund revenues for that current year were $141 million, and the general fund expenditures were $136 million. And I do want to emphasize that these numbers that we're talking about today are the June 30, 2007. I know a lot of time passes between now and then, but that's the official report dates. We talk about those numbers. If you go to the general fund summary slide, this is actually the revenues and expenditures side by side. It doesn't include other things, the other financing sources and uses which those numbers fluctuate. They might include transfers and debt, so we try not to include those in this particular slide so you can see where you stood before unusual items. In '06, your net income outside of operating, other operating sources and use was $6.5 million. In '07, it was $4.4 million. In the slide about fund balances, we talk about fund balances as they serve as a measure of the financial resources of the county, and we like to emphasize that this doesn't equal cash. Fund balance actually is all of your assets, less the liabilities. And there are three classifications of your fund balance. There's reserved, your unreserved, and designated, and your unreserved, undesignated. If you'll notice, the two on the bottom say they're available. However, all those reserved amounts that are reserved by state statute are reserved for grants that have a specific purpose. Those are third-party restrictions, and you can't spend that money for other things. And of that final unreserved part of that was appropriated in the 2008 budget, just to start with. So even though you might see a very big number, it gets reduced and reduced, which in two slides from now, you'll actually see that as well. You'll see that your total fund balance increase was $3.4 million in the current year. And in the slide titled "Fund Balance Position," you'll see two years side by side and see that total fund balance dollar amount, reduced by the total required reservations. And then you'll see the undesignated available. And again, this is already reduced when you do the budget. And for any other designations, if, there are some designations that you won't even see on the face of this, but there are things that you might have already planned for if you were setting aside for certain things. Those really are designated, they just don't show up in the financials. So, you know, we don't like to give you a picture and say, "You have $47 million." That's just not an accurate thing, so we like to break that down a little bit more. Of those required reservations, again, some of that is required by state statute. You have certain things, register of deeds, capital outlay, or grants that haven't been completely spent. Those are the things that are sitting there. The next slide, the unreserved fund balance as a percent of your expenditures. A lot of people like to see exactly how much their expenditures run and how that compares to what's sitting there available. You'll see that yours originally in 2005 was 19. It went up to 21 and back down to 19. So you're keeping a nice, steady pace. You're not necessarily growing too fast or falling low, so you're kind of keeping it nice and level, which I think goes along with your budgetary plan from the looks of it. You're following along with what your plan is. The top three revenues in the general fund, I always find these pictures really interesting because you see where the main source of money comes from. If we talk about just the first three revenues, it makes up 87% of all the revenue that you get, and it comes from property taxes, sales taxes, and then the federal and state grants. The federal and state grants fluctuate a good bit, but they're still the third-largest source of your income on most average years. Your property tax, we'll look at these big chunks individually, and your property tax increased 13% over the prior year, but that has growth and a 3% tax increase. Your next large item, the sales tax, has gone up 9% over the past two years. That sales tax, I don't know if it'll increase the same way next year. It really depends on the economy, so it could, that's a number that could greatly fluctuate the next couple of years, depends on what's going on. Again, it was a 9% increase, two years in a row. In the federal and state grants, you'll see that it actually decreased 4% from the prior year. And again, that's one that's going to fluctuate often. But in the prior year, you received a big elections grant, a have-a-grant-for-voting-machines. Well, obviously, that was a one-year deal, so now you're back down to a smaller number. And again, that will, that could potentially change every year. In your top three expenditures in the general fund, you'll see, again, when you look at, when you look at the slice of pie, they take up 74%, and it's the education, public safety, and human services. And, you know, that's pretty standard for a county your size, all of those. The change over the prior year for human services is 9%, and that is mainly due to added positions and salary increases. Also, there was, there are individual things that go up in some years. I know you had some of your DSS services actually increased over the prior year substantially, and it's not something that you can necessarily control. Your public safety increased 12% over the prior year. And again, that is due to added positions and salary increases primarily. There are other items that might have fluctuated inside of that, but those are primarily due to those two things. And in your education, that was another item that also increased, that was a 7% increase over the prior year. But you have big school projects that pretty much started about two years ago, where some of the financing came in two years ago. Looks like a lot of the building has happened in the last year. Your Iredell-Staatsville Schools and your Mooresville Greater School District, I think it's called. I just asked Susan. We speak just for a moment about your solid waste disposal facility fund, and that's just to show you what some of the different numbers are on that. Your debt service for 2007 was a little over $600,000. Your total net assets were $17,575. The depreciation expense is $800,000. The operating income for the current year was $1,700,000, and the cash flow provided by operations was over $2.9 million. That's a, that operations, or cash flow provided by operations is really a key number there because it lets you know what, just by the operating of that fund, is happening there. If that number was a much smaller number, you would have to consider whether, you know, can we really afford debt in that account if we are not providing operating? That is everything I have as far as my presentation, but I am here for questions if there are any. All right. I would like to say to please read the MDNA section of the financial statements that you've been given. That's a really good summary of what's happened last year, but it also talks about what's going, what the plan is for the future, so it's a really nice summary of what's going on with Iredell County. Well-written.
Any questions for Ms. Favi? Not, thank you, Ms. Favi.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Anyone? Or receive this information? This time, I'll call on Ms. Lindstein, announcements rate matters.
Yes, the following items were approved and added to the consent agenda. Item A, the approval to apply for a supplemental 2007 emergency management program grant, $6,562 from the state and $6,562 in matching funds. Those funds are already included in that budget, departmental supplies. Item B was a requi, or, excuse me, was information provided by Tax Administrator Bill Dolittle on the changes in the 2008 homestead exclusion laws. Item C, tax refunds and releases that were recommended for the month of October by Tax Administrator Bill Dolittle were approved. Item D was the approval of six-mile insurance district maps for the volunteer fire departments. These maps were developed by the GIS Department in conjunction with the Fire Marshal. Item E, approved the contract with Crowder Gulf for debris removal services. Number two, approved the contract with RW Beck for debris removal monitoring services. And item three, approved a memorandum of agreement with NC DOT for emergency removal of debris. And this would be during a cold state of disaster or an imminent threat of a disaster and a state of emergency. There'll be no calls to the county unless those contracts are activated. Item F was approved the selection of Clarion associates for a comprehensive land use plan. Item G, approved the request to use the land use planning process to develop urban service areas. Item H, approved the request to call for a public hearing on December 4, 2007 regarding the enhanced voluntary agricultural district ordinance. Item I, approved the request to apply for a North Carolina Sedimentation Control Commission assistance funding. Item J, approved the appointment of Commissioner Ken Robertson to the NC three-quarter study committee. As long as those meetings fit into Mr. Robertson's schedule, hopefully in the evenings. Item K, approved the request for the North Carolina Social Services Association, the Iredell County DSS branch, for approval to solicit on county property. Item L, approved a three-year lease renewal with the NC Department of Environment and Natural Resources for 103, excuse me, 108 square feet, Iredell County Government Center South, at a price of $1,050 a year. Item M, approved in November 6, 2007 minutes. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Lindstein. Are there any additions or corrections to the... Not to have a motion to accept the legislative agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay, the move. Are there any questions regarding that motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Announcement of favors occurring on boards and commissions. Lake Norman Marine Commission, one announcement.
Mr. Chairman, since this appointment should have been made in October, I would ask that we amend the rules and make this appointment this evening. I would like to appoint Ron Scholz to the Lake Norman Marine Commission.
Any comments regarding questions, concerns? Motion on the floor. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Okay. Board of Health, five announcements. Homeland Community Care and Block Grant Committee, five announcements. Criminal Justice Partnership Program Committee, seven announcements. Appellate to Boards and Commissions, State for Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table this appointment until our next meeting.
Motion to table. Any questions? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Adult Care and Home Community Alternative Committee, two appointments.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion to table. Any questions? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Nation Home Advisory Committee, five appointments.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to table.
Chairman, there is one...
Oh, okay. I missed that.
Okay.
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Brenda Spees.
Linda?
Brenda Spees.
Brenda Spees. Okay, Brenda Spees is nominated. Any additional nominees? Okay.
Here, no, I believe that nomination be closed, and we accept Ms. Spees by acclamation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Okay, we have Community Alternatives Program for Disabled Adults, six appointments.
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Larry Laurie Clum from DSS, Jackie Nigley from Council on Aging, Carolyn Lamb from DSS, Lee Ann Dougherty from Hospice, Karen Nevett from Health Service, Renee Carricker from Bryan Center.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Ayes have it. Okay, Trappin' Planning and Zoning Board, ETJ, one appointment. Is there anyone for that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Mr. Scott Murdoch.
Scott Murdoch? Okay. Nomination Scott Murdoch. Any questions regarding that motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Crossroads Behavioral Healthcare Board, one appointment.
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Iris Mayberry.
Iris Mayberry. Any additional nominees? Motion on the floor. Any questions regarding that motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Recreation Authority Board, four appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we nominate Mike Satoris, Bob Howell, Barbara Thorson, and David Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Roffin. Any additional nominees? Any questions regarding the nominees? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Okay, at this time, we'll move to unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Neblock will present that.
Okay.
Good evening. Give y'all just a second to pass that around. I apologize for not having that to you sooner, but as y'all are aware, this is a work in process or progress with Pratt, and it continues to be that. But we opened the bids for Pratt on the 16th of this month. On the backside of your sheet that I just handed out, there's a tally of the bids. We had three bidders, as you can see there. We had one bidder that came in within the budgeted amount, which was Huffman Grading. The other two bidders came in over budget. Huffman did come in within budget. Unfortunately, one of their subcontractors that had represented themselves as a minority business contractor on DOT's list was not on DOT's approved list, so they are going to have to go through a good-faith effort review before DOT will make a recommendation on that. So I come with you tonight with a somewhat unusual recommendation, in that I'm trying to cover all the bases so we can expedite this process as much as possible. So I have a multi-pronged recommendation here. The first recommendation would be to award the contract to Huffman Grading, which is the low bidder, or the apparent low bidder, pending approval of their good-faith effort by NC DOT's Good Faith Review Committee. If for some reason that NC DOT denies their good-faith effort, then I would request that you would allow us to negotiate with the second lowest bidder, which is Insight Development, to see if it would be possible to negotiate it within budget with Insight. If those first two options fail, then last but not least, I would request that if we're unsuccessful in number one and two, that we allow to rebid the project, which is basically our only alternative. I know that's a very broad, sweeping request, but in the interest of trying to move this thing forward, that gives me hopefully enough latitude to go whichever direction we need to go, depending on the decision of DOT. And I'll be glad to answer any questions anyone has.
How much was the budget on this project?
$488,000.
Mr. Neblock, the most unusual thing I find in this place, in this whole... Mr. Neblock, the most unusual thing I find in this whole process is your patience and perseverance.
Well, it has been an education. I'll leave it at that.
And expertise for the money that you've saved us.
Any additional questions, Mr. Neblock? Any questions, Mr. Neblock? If not, do I have a motion?
I'd move, Mr. Chairman, we follow Mr. Neblock's recommendation that we award the contract to Huffman Grading pending approval of the good faith effort by the DOT. If that's not successful and results in the DOT's denial of Huffman's good faith effort, that we allow him to negotiate with the second lowest bidder, Insight Development, in attempt to negotiate the project within budget. Should he be unsuccessful in that, that we would allow him to rebid the project.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions about the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Thank you. I say it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. We're now in our public comment period. I don't know how many we have signed up.
Sir, we have five.
Got five. Okay, during the public comment period, we will allow you three minutes to speak. Mr. Robertson will be our timekeeper, and we will go from there. I'll start off with Anthony Fox.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Fox. Do you need an address as well? I am at 401 South Tryon Street in Charlton, North Carolina, 3 Warkovia Building. I'm here tonight on a matter that is of concern and interest for the citizens of rural Aridale County. The items that are of particular interest are Items 8, F, G, and H. As you may recall, that you recently took action on those items on your consent agenda. Those items, we request, we want to make two requests with regards to those items. Well, first of all, let me tell you why I'm here on such short notice. I'm here because the citizens of rural Aridale County just recently learned that these items would be on your agenda and have had very little opportunity to review the items as well as have input on the items. Now, let me tell you what the citizens that I represent would like. They would like for an opportunity to have citizen input, and the items in question relate to the amendment to your land use plan, which they would like, and I would like to offer them up as citizens to be a part of that process. I know you just recently approved a contract with a consultant to guide you through that process. I did not hear that that process included some public input or public or citizen involvement. And what my clients would like is an opportunity to help the county shape policy in a meaningful direction by having a voice at that table. The other item of particular interest is, as it relates to your December 4th public hearing on the enhanced voluntary agricultural district ordinance. Again, my folk just recently learned of the opportunity of this ordinance and therefore have had little opportunity to review it, let alone to have input in it. You will have a public hearing on December 4th, less than two weeks away, with the holidays that really narrows it down to one week. I don't know what the rush is, but the appeal to you is that there is an opportunity for these citizens to have input into that ordinance as you go forward with it. And why is that important? It's important because if you look at the purpose of the ordinance, that ordinance's purpose includes the use of agriculture and farmland for any other purpose, which your planning director indicated he was uncertain to as to what those uses could very well include. And if those uses are broad as the language is, there may be an opportunity there, which you, I'm sure, as governing body, would not like, for inconsistent uses to occur as a result of that enactment. And all we're seeking is the opportunity to be there, to help have, to have input on that ordinance provision, and to be able to talk about what those other products are for consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make it clear that these folks will have ample opportunity to make their concerns known. We're not making a decision on anything tonight. All we're doing is calling for a public hearing.
Right, I was going to have Mr. Smith come up and explain the process.
We're going to do that on December the 4th. Nobody's trying to adopt anything tonight.
Okay. Mr. Smith, would you come up just a few minutes and explain the process before we move further?
I'll start with the public hearing that's in question, and this is the basic, the basic part of this. Essentially, tonight, obviously, we're calling for the public hearing, and over the next couple of weeks, as Mr. Fox has said, people will have an opportunity to get ready to comment at that public hearing. And as Mr. Johnson has said, that really, there's no necessity that a decision be made that night, however, it can be made that night. There are some issues in this ordinance that will be hammered out, I expect, at that meeting, but that would be the basic process, hearing everyone's comments on December 4th. As far as the land use plan is concerned, we are definitely building into that process a public input facet. What I would expect that is that, in the least, we will take, essentially, take the plan on the road, so to speak, and go to different parts of the county, since it is countywide, to solicit information and input from the public to then be reviewed at a later date, again, probably by those same people, before finalization.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Sure, sure.
Did another group, was there another body that helped draft this ordinance?
The Farmland Preservation Board helped us with the recommendations that have come before you, yes. Now, there is a model ordinance that is based on the statutes that is put out, I believe, by the Department of Agriculture.
Okay, and that board has been in existence for?
The Farmland Board, since, I believe it was '01 is when it was essential, or was originally adopted.
Okay, so it wasn't just created. And it's made up of citizens or members of your planning staff?
It is made up of citizens.
Okay, from the agricultural areas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Smith?
Just a comment. On the December 4th meeting, we are under no compulsion to adopt an ordinance that night. We're under no political compulsion, no statutory compulsion. That is an ordinance we will adopt when we feel comfortable with the ordinance as it is now or any amendments that can be offered to this ordinance. And on December the 4th, everyone will be given ample opportunity to raise their concerns. If in the collective mind of this body, those concerns are valid, then we can vote to postpone it to a later decision.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody trying to rush anything here. We simply have to announce a public hearing before we hold it.
Okay. Mr. Howell, would you like to come up and speak? Okay. How about Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you. My name is Bobby Sullivan. I appreciate your time today, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the board. I represent the same citizens group that Mr. Fox does, and I know that we've talked about some of this already tonight, but I just wanted to echo a couple of his concerns. I know that you're going to have a public hearing on this agricultural district ordinance on December 4th to give people an opportunity to provide input, but I think what's important is that, where the real value comes from a public hearing is if you've got a public that's already informed, and they understand what's being proposed, and they can really come with some informed comments and input. And I think, like Mr. Fox said, I know that the Farm Board's been working on this ordinance, but a lot of people are not going to know anything about it. They're going to be with their families for Thanksgiving this week, they're going to come back next week, and by the time they find out about it, they're not really going to have a time to really understand and study it in time to come and give you some real information. And I've seen it before at other public hearings where the public doesn't know a lot about a proposal before the public hearing, and what you find is, they come to the public hearing and rather knowing what their concerns are or having information, they really, they are trying, asking questions and trying to just understand the proposal to begin with. And I'm afraid that might be what happens here, especially since there are, it sounds like, some unanswered questions. It was discussed during your briefing session, for example, that this ordinance could apply to property where up to 25% is not being used for, being used for non-farm activities, and it was unclear exactly what that meant. We would respectfully suggest that issues like that, there should be some fleshing out of that in advance, so you've got a clear proposal that people can really appreciate how it might affect them before you have the public hearing, and that might be an opportunity, that kind of fleshing out be another opportunity for some public to get involved before you actually get to the final public hearing and consideration by the board. But with that being said, I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Dorfson, would you like to come in?
Mr. Norman, I'm not sure, but I would like to make, I'll have to come up there and watch.
Mr. Norman, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I believe after a little discussion with the attorneys following our session a while ago, the one item, and correct me if I am wrong, that is probably in question is, what is encompassed in that goodness grows in North Carolina? Is that not it? I feel like we can probably get that answered from the Department of Agriculture. I think you have been referred to them. Everything there, as you all know, is based on the statutes as given to us. I've been, as I've said before, a good many meetings where this type thing has been discussed. The 25%, when I first learned about this, meant 25% of your gross sales of products. I think I picked up what they're alluding to, and I assure you this, we hadn't heard of any biodiesel plant when we formulated this. We did back last, did finalize this back last July, and I could not answer their questions as to whether or not it did or did not apply to that. I don't know, nor does Mr. Smith or anyone else in here. Mr. Pope, do you know? Have you seen anything?
What's the question?
Did the 25, in the goodness grows in North Carolina, have you seen a definition of that?
No, I haven't seen.
Just what? Okay. So I can't answer that, but we will, I assure you, we will try to find out what is defined there.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Mr. Carter?
I will pass now.
Okay, thank you. Well, this ends our public comment period. Do we have any new business? Any new business? If not, county managers report.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a report, other than the written report that is placed before you. I do, however, have two or three items for a closed session, which has been placed on the agenda.
Okay. Next item, closed session, 143 S. 318, Section 11, A5, property acquisition. What should we go into closed session? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise.[1406.63]
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's a move, Mr. Chairman.
A move? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed.
Thank you.
Have a good Thanksgiving, everyone.